Good evening, we're going to start the workshop session of the City of Asbury Park Council Meeting. I will jump right into the insurance review.
Thank you Cindy, good evening. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council, my name is Ezio Alzamura from the Gem Ottersden Insurance Agency. This is our annual insurance review. In front of you, you have the insurance packet that I handed out previously. I will brief through it. If you have any questions, please stop me. Tonight, we also have Maria, our account manager from Polaris from the NGIF, Maria Makos, and of course, everyone knows Eric Nemeth, the counsel for the NGIF as well. So on page one, on the right side of your packet, is an introduction of who we are and what we do for the City of Asbury Park. We've been appointed since January 1st, 2016, as the city's risk manager, annual representative for the NGIF, plus the ancillary coverages that we place and write for the City of Asbury Park. If you go to page two, it just gives a brief description of our agency, and some of our current public entity clients throughout the state of New Jersey. Our brokerage firm handles approximately 34 public entities. That's just a short list of some of the public entities that we insure and risk manage for. On page three, these are the principals of the firm, myself, my partners Joe Gentile and Matt McGarrow. Gem Insurance Agency Inc. is part of the Ottersden Agency. We have seven offices throughout the state of New Jersey, and carry a lot of risk management for public entities, and have a lot of experience and credentials and designations that all of us carry. If you go to page five, this is the beginning of the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund Indemnity and Trust Agreement. I do want to personally thank Maria Makos from Polaris, and Eric Nemeth, the attorney for the NGIF, for always working with me and the City of Asbury Park to move the City of Asbury Park forward in its risk management endeavors. So the coverages start with what we negotiated as your risk manager back in 2016, where we put in place reduced deductibles under the worker compensation policy based on certain guidelines and certain areas where we hit, where we have reductions in claims. I'm happy to say that we are reducing our worker claims year to year, so for 2018, you can see how the deductible has been reduced since we became appointed in January 1st, 2016. So you did achieve your objective on the bottom of page five for 2018, and your deductibles were reduced. If you go to page six, we negotiated with Polaris, the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund, reductions in general liability and in auto liability, and then the remaining deductibles are listed in letters C, D, and E on page six. On page seven is the plan of risk management that is filed with the state of New Jersey Department of Banking and Insurance for the fund years 2018 to 2019, and these are just highlights of the insurance coverages that go through the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund. Page eight is just an introduction and a history of the NGIF, which was formed February 1st of 1991. The City of Asbury Park became a member of the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund on February 15th, 2011. On page nine through 11 are the operational philosophy and procedures of the NGIF, so it gives you a little background of how the assessments or the premiums get derived, and some of their reserves and their funding. If you skip to page 12, third-party administrator for the claims, and we just had our second-quarter safety meeting on Monday here, and we have representatives from PMA, and we review in detail the claims trends through the City of Asbury Park for the past three years. PMA is the third-party administrator. Their safety and loss prevention, and again, the fund runs exceptionally well with the help of Maria Makos and Eric Nemeth, and everyone knows Eric's abilities with litigation. If you go to page 13, this begins a general overview of the coverages offered, and in the center of that page lists from automobile down to cyber liability. Pages 14 through 23 are the limits and the coverages. If there's anything you see that you have a question on, you can always call me afterwards. I'm not going to touch upon every coverage, but it's extensive coverage and extremely high limits for the City of Asbury Park. So I'm going to jump to page 24. 24 are the additional coverages that our office writes outside the JIF. We have an accident policy for your recreation program. We have an underground storage bank policy specific to those locations as listed. And recently, we rewrote your group dental with Delta Dental. We brought them in for four different Delta dental plans offered to your employees at very competitive rates, and coverage for dependents outside the state of New Jersey, which was a big benefit compared to the prior coverages that you had. On page 25, this is just some items that I like to list. I call it a work in progress under risk management. I have a blast email that goes out to all department heads about every other week with safety initiatives, classes. We've been doing a lot of training this week with your staff at the City of Asbury Park. If you go to the left side of the packet, I'd like to give the governing body a little synopsis of coverages and claims based on past three years. So the first item is your commercial auto. This is first and third-party bodily injury and property damage claims. You can see over the last three years, there's been a reduction in the severity of the size of the claims, which is a great trend. You can see it in the bar graph, and there's been a steady reduction in frequency as well. So the trend is very, very favorable over the last three years, especially the past two years. The next sheet is liability claims, and again, we've had reductions from the 2015 year compared for 2016 and 17, and we've also had a nice drop in the claims there. We're trending a little higher in 2017, but again, the total incurred has reduced there and under the auto, excuse me, under liability slip and fall type of claims. Under property, it's virtually, there's no claims with property. We've had two claims in 2017 over the past three years, and the last is the worker compensation line of coverage. We've had a reduction in frequency and of lost time claims and in severity. So again, the trend is very favorable for worker compensation and the employees in the City of Asbury Park. The other item on the left side of my packet is just what I put together every year, and I work with your department heads. These are recommended insurance requirements for the City of Asbury Park when we have discussions on third-party vendors, when vendors come in for amusement rides. We want to make sure that the city is protected. My office will review indemnity agreements, hold harmless certificates of insurance. I'll make my recommendations. I have samples of indemnification and hold harmless. I could work with Fred and with Eric and make sure that the city is protected contractually and with insurance. That's the belt and suspenders approach to risk management. If you go back to the right side of my packet, under the work in progress, last year, as the governing body may remember, we were successful in soliciting and getting from the NGIF a $10,000 safety grant, which went towards police body cameras. I am happy to say, and happy to present to the governing body, this year, the City of Asbury Park has been named the 2017 recipient of the NGIF, the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund Top Safety Award. So I have a plaque, Mayor, for you, and the check of $1,500 was presented at the Safety Committee meeting on Monday. So this is the plaque from the NGIF. So congratulations to the governing body and all the department heads. You have never won that award as a member of the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund. So I thank the mayor and council, all the department heads, especially Michael, Chief Ketti, Cindy, and all you department heads are doing outstanding job in safety. So congratulations with the $1,500 and the safety plaque. It is my pleasure to work with you. I love the City of Asbury Park, even though I'm from Bergen County, but I love coming down here. I find your department heads and your community a welcoming one, so I thank you for that. I thank you for the reappointment in 2018. Does anyone have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get a picture of you giving us the thing, so we can post it on Facebook?
On Facebook, the city. We'll look at the numbers, and anybody that wants to look at the numbers, the dollar amount was like, one of the claims is going from 1.2 to 700,000. So it's a significant savings since we've been dealing with these very talented professionals.
Now you need everyone a little bit closer. Now you should just take a picture. You got it, John? Just one more. Just one more. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. No, 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 that's okay, that's okay.
Thank you. Thank you everyone.
By the way, the check's been deposited already. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Next item is a presentation by Surf Rider.
Good evening, Mayor, council, department heads, thank you for having us here. My name is Andrew Chambray, the Chair of the Surf Rider Foundation Jersey Shore Chapter, and I'm here with John Weber, Mid-Atlantic Regional Director, and we'd just like to talk to you briefly about single-use plastics, plastic pollution along the shore. As many of you might know, Jersey Shore Chapter is very involved in Asbury Park. We hold a lot of events, and one of our big events that we hold regularly are beach cleanups. Recently, we held one actually back in February, and in one day, we collected 980 pounds of trash. It was about, I'd say, 90% plastic, 264 straws, 72 plastic bottles, and 116 plastic bags. And again, that was just in one day, with about 80 volunteers. That's not even us going out there every day to collect what's on the beaches. The plastic finds its way into the lakes, into the water, it breaks down into microplastics, it gets into the food chain, and it corrupts the environment, and it's harmful to human health. And we feel that implementing a plastic, single-use plastic ban or fee on either/or bags, straws, plastic containers would be a good move and a progressive step for Asbury Park. And as many of you would know, a lot of municipalities up and down the shore have been implementing these same types of bans, and John's going to talk a little bit more about that.
Sure, thanks. Thanks, Mayor, and members of the council. It's nice to be at a council meeting on this side of the day, so I'm enjoying this. Yeah, so finally, you have a bunch of towns doing this in New Jersey. I gave you a sheet, there's eight different towns on here. I'll talk about the different options, but the ancient history on this is in 2007, San Francisco famously banned plastic bags, and that's all they did, and then everybody basically just used paper, and that was not the intention, and they had to go back and redo that. There's been several different evolutions of bag legislation since then in California and elsewhere. So after that, you know, the idea of fees came out. Washington DC has a fee on both paper and plastic, because we're not trying to pick one kind of product over another kind of product. We're trying to discourage single use, and we're trying to encourage reusable bags, and that's actually a key point. Don't think of this as the anti, if you do anything, don't think of this as the anti-plastic bag legislation. Think of this as the encourage people to bring their reusable bag legislation, because that's really what you're trying to do as a town. So the fees work, it doesn't, it's not absolute, it doesn't eliminate, but it cuts down on bag use considerably. It's about 70% in Washington DC after a short amount of time, so that was great. The more recent trend in California, again, is they banned plastic but put a fee on paper, and they let the merchant keep the fee, because it pays the merchant for, you know, they're buying the bags. Paper bags are more expensive, there's no doubt about that, and paper bags are actually more energy intensive, so if you get into this argument about is it better for the environment, and so that's why, that's one of the reasons, don't just ban plastic and just tell everybody to use paper, that's okay. So in New Jersey, we've got Longport, tiny town, you know, South Atlantic County. They have a 10 cent fee, it goes to the merchant. There's another one in here, a couple that have a 5 cent fee that goes to the merchant. And then there's a number of other towns on here that honestly, I don't think that the right thing, they just banned plastic bags. They didn't come to Surf Rider Foundation first, or any other environmental group that has experience with this, and they basically just banned plastic bags. And I think they're probably going to run into some trouble with their merchants over time, because they're, you know, either the merchants are just paying more for bags, and they're probably just passing that on to the consumers. So, you know, so there are some options. I think a fee, you know, a fee works, if it's a fee on both paper and plastic, or if you want to ban plastic, you can put a fee on paper. That's what really gets people thinking to bring their own bag. I will say this, you know, if you couple that with some kind of community education, community outreach, where you, I mean, it's a great branding opportunity for the town. I'm sure you have no problem with this, just get some iconic something, there's so many iconic things in Asbury Park. Put it on a bag, you know, make 10,000 of them. I mean, Long Beach Township on Long Beach Island, they literally made 10,000 bags. Their goal is to give them away to all the residents that want them, you know, they don't need them all, they're going to give them to people in need, or food pantries, or whatever. But that's a great marketing opportunity there. Make sure you get them in the hands of, you know, just say seniors or low-income people, just make sure people, everybody has a chance to get their reusable bags. Again, it's a marketing opportunity. If people just come to visit, they'll be reminded of their great, you know, stay or their great time in Asbury Park, and that's what you want. You want them thinking of Asbury Park when they go back to wherever they came from. So it's a great marketing opportunity, and, you know, it's really going to depend on your business community. My understanding is that there's been some preliminary conversations with the business community. So those are your options. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Yeah, so just by way of background for everybody out there, Andrew emailed me a couple months ago, just trying to take the temperature, and I think we were all pretty jazzed about the idea. So we started bringing it up at the business committee meetings, and generally speaking, the business committee was also jazzed about the idea. They had a request that if we were going to either charge a fee or ban or do something like that, to provide them with alternatives. So we weren't just kind of dumping this ordinance on them and then not, you know, providing them with alternatives of places they could go to to get different bags or lids or straws. And I think we have a number of businesses that have already banned some of these things, right? You guys have banned straws essentially. And so the business committee's played around with, you know, a couple of ways to make, that it will make their lives easier. So we also met with the green team. Eileen's not here, but Eileen met with the green team, and, you know, they were also really jazzed about the idea. And then Eileen and I both met with John and Andrew to go over how we can do what you're saying, which is not just ban everything, just, you know, work with the Surf Rider Foundation and do something that we are not adding another burden to businesses, but really trying to get their buy-in on it. And thus far, we've really been met with businesses that were jazzed about the idea, and had great ideas as well, including what you guys want to do, which is really put on an educational campaign. You know, have the city buy 1,000 bags or whatever, and do a movie about what plastics do, and really try to phase in over time a fee or ban in Asbury. So that's just by way of background, but if you guys have any specific questions, I think our next step might be playing around with drafts and narrowing down exactly what we want to, what we want to think about banning, and what timeframe we want to give for that. And maybe we could shoot you guys, you know, kind of where we're going as we're going through it. We're not going to do anything like this minute, but we certainly hope to have something done over the course of the next few months.
Sure. A couple things to consider whenever, if you pass something, you know, you might want to consider like a six-month lead time, because some merchants actually have a supply of bags that they have to go through.
Right.
And again, it's your ordinance, make it, you know, how you see fit. I mean, some places, it applies to restaurants, some places, it doesn't apply to restaurants. We're actually struggling with that in Bradley Beach right now, and trying to decide, we're probably going to do something, a lot of restaurants for our small town, we've got to decide if they're a part of it. So make it, you know, something that works for you, and then I think you will see, yeah, the sky does not fall, and the world does not end, and you could probably take some other steps on preventing the single-use plastics. So I probably promised to get you some ordinance language, and I didn't do that, so I can enlighten you a few different types if you want.
Yeah, and Andrew got me a couple, but that would be awesome.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll kind of start playing around at our next business committee and green team, and then obviously, if the public has input on this, we would love to hear that from you now, prior to us drafting the ordinance. That would be great as well. So anyone watching either here or on AP-TV who has thoughts about fees or bans or straws or lids or plastic bags. We did try to take the number, I'm going to say, top seven or eight things that is repeatedly found on the beach, and tried to think of ways that we can start weeding that down a little bit.
Great.
Great, thank you both so much for coming.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you on it.
Managers report on issues raised at prior council meetings?
Not at this time.
Special events?
Is there any questions on the existing special event applications?
No.
Review of this evening's agenda.
Resolution 210 is the special event application. Resolutions 211, 12, 13, and 14 are ratifying the existing or will be the new union contracts. The state has signed off on all the contracts. Resolution 2015 is to prepare and deliver the estimated third-quarter tax bills. We have concerns about a possible government shutdown at the state level, which will not then certify a tax rate for us. So we were seeking permission to at least put third-quarter estimated bills out, so we have money. But as we've discussed in the past, this is the first time in many, many years, we actually have a budget done on time, and now this happens. Resolution 2016 is canceling various balances of trust reserves. It's money that has no use for us anymore, and that we'd like to cancel. This goes back into the general fund as miscellaneous revenue not anticipated, which goes into fund balance for next year. 2017 is procedural for the electronic tax sales, along with 18 and 19. Those are all procedural to, for the city to do the accelerated tax sale. Resolution 220 is a standard resolution for dedication by rider for annual grant to receive for clicker or ticket. 221, 22 are RCA agreements, and resolution 224 is a formal action of the annual action plan for CBPG programs. As you know, the county has taken over our operations, the daily operations of the CBPG program, and one of the things that we're doing is making sure that our operations are concurrent with theirs. They have the freeholders pass this, so we're asking you to pass this. It's already been done, you've already approved the programs, but this is just another formality to make sure that we're concurrent with what they're operating. Is there any questions on the consent agenda? Moving to individual resolutions, 225 is approving the payment of bills. Resolution 226 is authorizing a change order for the Firehouse Linto Project. That project is coming along smoothly. There might be another change order at the next meeting, because the work is gone fast, and there might be some structural issues with one of the other doors. The structural engineer's looking at it, so we might be able to do another, fix another problem before it actually happens. Resolution 227 is change order 19 for Blackrock. Resolution 228 is awarding the third-party municipal court debt collections. The contract expired, as you remember, we bid this out, there was no responses. This time, there was three responses. This is part of what was required as the state MOU. Currently, there's approximately $2.8 million in outstanding court debt. This contract, quite honestly, only nets us like $40,000 a year. It's incredibly difficult to collect outstanding debt, but in order to be completed with the MOU with the state, we're doing it anyway. The state gave us the option not to do it, but it's still better than nothing. So we're requesting movement ahead with that. Resolution 229 is asphalt materials from Stavola. This is a purchasing resolution to ensure that we don't go, that if we go over the bid threshold, it's authorized. Resolution 230 is the city manager to sign treatment works applications. This has become a standard resolution that when a treatment work application comes before the city for any development or city-owned project, it goes to DEP. I can sign it because it's sealed by the engineer. We'd like to ask that this would also be put as part of the reorganization, as it's just a general annual bureaucratic thing to do. Resolution 231 is municipal use of a temporary cell tower at 4,000, at block 4,000, fronting on Kingsley Street, Kingsley Street within the waterfront redevelopment area. This is a partnership with the master developer. The city currently is experiencing some cellular issues. AT&amp;T has approached, and the master developer, about a temporary cell installation through the summer months. As you've heard previously, Verizon has coverage issues as we keep growing. AT&amp;T has coverage issues as we keep growing. And this was a perfect opportunity, because at the federal level, the federal government authorized AT&amp;T to enter, they won, AT&amp;T won the FirstNet Award. The FirstNet program is for first responders to get higher priority on cellular service. We did a first test of their network. We found that speeds were actually better than Verizon. So we're contemplating switching, but during the summer, obviously, where we're more busy, we want to be able to do this and see what sort of coverage we get. So I've been working with AT&amp;T, IT Joe, and the master developer too, to look at how we can actually try to offer more bandwidth for the city, the residents, and the first responders. 232 is rejection of development.
Just back to 231, because I know you and I talked about this a couple times. Did we get an exact location on where that's going?
It was in the plant, the cow.
Well, the map was like, I mean, the map, yeah, it wasn't really, okay, okay.
Rejection 232 is the development proposals for City Hall and the Transportation Center sites. As you know, the city issued a request for qualifications for developers earlier this year. As we've been reviewing them, there was obviously federal legislation involving the opportunity zones. City Hall and the Transportation Center is in an opportunity zone, so what we're looking to do is change the financial aspect of this, to recognize that by the end of the summer, there should be the opportunity zones. Once they're approved by the federal government, we're going to reissue the RFQ, but this is a game changer in a lot of aspects for funding. Resolution 233 and 234, I believe there's going to be other discussions on, or are these okay?
233 will be amended, 234 will be requested to be tabled.
Okay. Resolution 2018-235 is a very important resolution. These are the documents that authorize lot-by-lot development in the waterfront. Is there any questions on the individual resolutions?
Fred, do you know where the tower, where specifically the cell tower is going?
Michael was correct, Amy. It is shown on the plan, and it's in the resolution.
I know, I saw the map, but the map was like an aerial view of where it's going.
It's just off the intersection of Kingsley Street. It's deep, not big block, but close to big block.
Okay. Sorry.
Introduction tonight is Resolution Ordinance 2018-28 to amending traffic and parking regulations. Mr. Manzella is here if there's any questions on that. And for second reading, 2018-15 is amendment to the waterfront redevelopment plan. That is the lot-by-lot that has been tabled. And Resolution 2018-20 is also part of the lot-by-lot, is the special assessment ordinance. Resolute, ordinance, I'm sorry. Ordinance 2018-21 is the, is requested to be tabled. That is the affordable housing development fees until Mr. Raffetto and the consultant get approval from the court. This just has to be there to be tabled every meeting. And Resolution 2018-25, we're going to do request that it be voted down tonight, as we're going to be making substantial changes to that from a staff perspective. Is there any questions on the ordinance system?
What were the two rebukings?
That is the ordinance, Mayor, that would allow for an encroachment into the right-of-way for the development located at 545 Lake. And the dollar amount of the compensation is being changed, so we're drafting a revised version of that that will be submitted to you for introduction at the next meeting. In the meantime, you'll vote down this version.
Okay.
Any other questions on the agenda? Matters by the City Council.
On Saturday, the 16th of June, we're going to have our monthly exclamation meeting at St. Stephen's Church. At 11 o'clock, there will be a session with an attorney called Know Your Rights. At eleven o'clock, there will be a session with an attorney called Know Your Rights, and at twelve, the expungement session will begin. On June twentieth, in the Springwood Avenue Park, the Quality of Life Committee is having a welcome-to-summer party, and it will be live music, food trucks, and we're also dedicating a plaque to the musical heritage of the Springwood Avenue. And on Monday, June twenty-fifth, the Asbury Park Music Foundation begins its summer music festival in the Springwood Avenue Park. And the first act is going to be Dez and the Swag Matics. So that's Monday, June twenty-fifth, and it will continue throughout the summer, so please come out and enjoy the park and enjoy your friends. If it rains, the, we won't have a rain date, but it will be moved to the Transportation Center.
Starting at six o'clock, right?
Starting at six o'clock, and the first date again is the twentieth.
The Asbury Park Recreation Committee has come together and put an outstanding show together, outstanding fashion show that is scheduled July the fourteenth. We're very fortunate to have a lot of elected officials, Chamber of Commerce, the Beer Garden, a lot of teachers, a lot of principals. So this is a diverse group, and they're looking forward to showing off their style. July the fourteenth, tickets will go on the sale tomorrow, and it's going to be a lot of fun. If you want to buy a ticket, it'll be advertised to come at City Hall, and they're only $10. And we looked, expected to have a great crowd and a great show, so think about it, and you'll see advertised, more advertising is out very soon. Thank you.
I just have one thing. We wanted to give our condolences to the family and friends of Jerry Scranno. He's been coming to our council meetings, I think, since I've lived here, if not before, and that's years upon years. So we want to just offer our condolences, and specifically to Rena and Louise, who all three of them have been coming to the council meetings together for years. So our, our heart goes out to them.
Sean, before you go, excuse me. I think it's appropriate, being that Jerry has, he had a missing meeting in years, that we just, I would like for you to just stand, please, let everybody just stand and just have a moment of solid disrespect and the family, and we thank you all.
I'm just going to echo what Jesse and Amy said. Jerry was one of a kind, and I never left a conversation with Jerry. You know, we fought without laughing. He just was the type of guy that could always make you laugh, and he was a typical person that fit right into Asbury Park, so I would be deeply missed. When are we going to have the auction for all those junk vehicles on Memorial Drive?
We have all the titles. Cindy and I just have to schedule it and work with GovDeals to get them down here because they'll do all the work for us. They'll take the pictures. It's just scheduling the auction and the IT information also. So it's next week or two, we should be able to get that settled and get the auction up and running. We have all the titles, right? Yeah. Bill's will be the titles.
If we're waiting for one or two titles, let's get rid of the other fifteen. I mean, they're junks, and they sit there, they're isolers. So if we can get rid of the majority of them, I'd be happy with that. Thank you.
Matters by the city manager?
Not at this time.
Matters by the city attorney? This time will break until seven p.m. Good evening. I'm going to call the order of the City of Asbury Park City Council to order. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Kendall?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yeah, here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for our silent prayer and moment of reflection, please. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two-thirty-one, Public Law nineteen-seventy-five, adequate notice of this meeting has provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Legend on January fourth, two thousand and eighteen, and posted it on Bolton Board the same day. All notices are filed with the city clerk. At this time, have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Each member of the public has three minutes to speak. When you come up to the mic, please state your name and address for the record, please.
In any order?
My name is Ernesto Caleri. I live at six oh eight Cookman Avenue, and I just wanted to inform the town council that for the last few years, a sex offender by the name of Julius Reynolds has been at the corner of Cookman Avenue in the presence of children and families, singing for hours. And several residents have, the Knotts family, have moved off of Cookman Avenue after several calls to the police came up with no remedy. So I wanted to formally make this council aware and ask what the council is prepared to do to make sure that this sex offender is no longer allowed to sing in our neighborhood.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. You and I talked about it via Nextdoor or whatever, and I said I'd forward it to the administration. I wish if anybody finds out something, they don't wait three years to tell us, or maybe you just found out about it too. I don't know.
I just found out that he's a sex offender.
Okay, so I forward it to the administration. It might be, you can take it from there.
So what we've been doing is reviewing other municipal ordinances that govern the permits that we issue. We've reviewed ours, obviously. We hope to have some sort of change in the ordinance, consistent with what other municipalities have been doing involving background checks and just generally tightening up the ordinance. So we hope to have something, if not the twenty-third, the first one in July for an introduction. But there is legal review that has to be done with this because there are other rights that we have to look at. But thank you for bringing it to our attention. We're going to look at it and hopefully have a recommended change to the governing body for the ordinance in the next month or so.
Thank you.
Robert Mina, six oh one Madison. I work with the original downtown merchants group, and we wanted to thank you for not restricting parking during the pride parade. The pride parade was probably a wonderful event, probably as big as any event we've had here. So the merchants are asking you, when it comes time for the zombie walk, not to stop parking on Cookman Avenue for almost the entire day, which hurts the business tremendously. So I think we want, just wanted to bring that up to you. Thank you for not closing the parking on that street. And when we're thinking about the zombie walk, there's, I don't understand any reason, and the group doesn't understand any reason, why we have to restrict parking from ten in the morning till six, whatever the time is. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You should email us that, so we can pass that on to the special events committee too, who make those determinations. I agree. I just, just email it to us so we make sure it gets to the right people.
Next down on Fourth Avenue. I too would like to thank you for not, not closing Cookman Avenue, the main thoroughfare of Asbury Park during the pride parade, which was, for all intents and purposes, a success. And as a merchant and speaking for all the merchants, we plead with you to, when a parade comes through town, to please keep parking and the thoroughfare as open as possible because it just restricts trade to an immense degree that we don't understand why you have to close the, close the street for so long, especially when there's other streets that run parallel to Cookman that you could bring a parade down. So thanks for the success of pride, and let's hope we can have successful parades that don't close down your main merchant thoroughfare in downtown Asbury Park. Cookman Avenue. Your main merchant thoroughfare. Thank you.
Hi there. Christian, four oh one, First Avenue. I came here to talk about something that bothered me last night, but I'm going to merge it with something else that bothered me on the way here. I went to Convention Hall last night. I went for a run and ran through Convention Hall on a quiet night, and I noticed there was five homeless men with all their bags sitting in various spots. Children were everywhere. The homeless in the boardwalk is getting more noticeable. It's more frustrating watching the panhandling going on. And on my way walking here, I got panned two times, from Library Square Park to this building here, two times. It's getting worse. I get panned hail on my lawn. I get panned hail shoveling snow. I get panned hail on the center front porch. It, it's disgusting. And, you know, I lived in New York City for years. I got panned hail less there than here. They're getting more aggressive, and it's just going to become a problem. One day, someone's going to get hurt, or it's just going to get worse and worse and worse to the point where just, we're known for that, and everybody's going to come here. So I, I don't know what else to do. I mean, it's, it's upsetting when you're on a footpath and someone collects you, and they stand right next to you, and they beg you for money, and they beg you for money. Two guys on the way here were pretty aggressive. So I don't know if the town wants to deal with this and it's a lovely thing or not, but you know what? It's just getting more noticeable. I called the cops, they're doing it in front of my house, and police, you know, usher them away, but no tickets given, no arrests made. I, I don't know. It's just, it gets to a point where I'm looking just going, you know, I have a family, I want to start a family one day, and I'm not going to do it in this town if I have kids out in the front yard, and they're going to be panned handled by, by people. And I live by the Del Monte, so it's about 3,000 times more than it is over here, but it's just getting ridiculous. So I don't know what the laws are in this town. I should have done my research on that, but it just seems like it's an accepted thing around here. I also have about like five churches in my neighborhood, which is, I moved there because of the churches and the park. I thought it was a beautiful neighborhood, but the churches are just magnets for this. And everyone from the church just drives home in their cars, and then the people in the neighborhood are left with the people who throw their styrofoam containers with free food on your front yard. They hang out in your front yard. It, it's, it's getting crazy. And I've talked to you guys before. I've brought up things with Del Monte and everything, but I'm at my breaking point right now, and I can't even walk to a town hall meeting without being asked. I can't go for a run in the evening without seeing five homeless men with their bags in Convention Hall. So that's the point I'd like to make. I just want to ask, is, what are the laws here? Are they going to start enforcing the laws? Are they enforcing the laws? You know, that's all I've got to say.
The aggressive panhandling has come up a bit. I know, I know Ernesto and I have talked about it as well. It's the worst I've seen it, at least since I've been here. You can't walk down Cookman without getting hit at least three times and aggressively. So I, I one hundred percent agree. I know Michael, we brought it up to Michael, and I think he was talking to Kelso about it.
Do we have a law that states that you can't do that?
There was a Supreme Court case a couple of years ago that it's considered protected speech. We can't force someone to stop. We can't tell them to move on. Our rights are really incredibly restricted. It was a 2015 case, actually, just sent it to everyone, the article on it. There's very little we can do other than talk to people to, to ask them to move on, but as long as there's no physical contact, the best thing is to call the police so we can document things, but it's protected speech right now.
Can't we get Doug in Social Services on it? Because it seems to be also being brought to our attention that there's more homelessness in Asbury Park, and he should be doing surveys and monitoring that.
The last count actually showed a reduction in the homeless.
The counts are, you know, bogus to me.
I'll talk to Doug.
Just because they go out one Monday, they all meet at the mission, and I'm not impressed how they do the count. I mean, when you walk down the street, you see them, you actually see them, so the count, I don't think. But again, Doug, I know you used to go to the beach run and check and see how many people were sleeping under the boardwalk, in the lockers. We had people sleeping in lockers this morning.
I'll talk to Doug.
Okay, can we get Social Services on that, please? Thank you.
Guys, welcome out at the same time and see all the homeless in the park. And you're already.
Thank you.
But you did come to the parking committee, and we made you happy. But you did come to the parking committee, and we made you happy.
I appreciate that.
Okay, we're passing that tonight.
Hi there. I'm Massimello from twelve oh six Fourth Avenue. I guess I have a statement. One of the things I'd like to do is thank the Asbury Park Police Department. I feel like I live in the safest home in the city, inasmuch as there's almost on a daily basis, a police officer parked in front of my home. Unfortunately, not to protect my home, but to address the unending speeding issue on Fourth Avenue. It seems that recently, we've decided to basically put well-delineated lines in the road so folks know exactly where to speed. Yellow-lined roads are, we put in no-passing lanes onto a residential street when passing wasn't the issue to begin with, speeding is. It seems almost as if it's a revenue source for the town as opposed to a public safety issue. I'd like to know what's been done. Officially, I witnessed something probably nobody should ever have to see yesterday. Jesse Kendall jumping up and down in the street. Why? Because he was trying to slow down a speeding school bus down Fourth Avenue. So I'd like to know what things are going to be done to address the issue.
But the yellow lines were also put down because each side of the street, you see, I think they're by your house now, they're not by mine yet, that were put in bike lanes. So you can't have passing when you have bike lanes. So that's part of the reason. And all reports, be it, and you can talk to the Complete Streets people, all reports say the lines stop speeding.
I spent three hours online today doing infinite amount of research, and there's no reports that say yellow lines have any effect on speeding.
Well, I'll, I'll.
What they affect are passing.
Go on Complete Streets homepage, and they posted the report from Bayonne, and it will definitely say that.
Have we addressed, or are we going to address any other measures?
Yeah.
Speed cables, something to do with the intersections, islands, anything planned?
Well, to address speeding, there's various macro approaches that you look at. You look at engineering, you look at traffic calming measures, you look at enforcement, and you look at education. Those are the four top things. For education, what we've seen is that it seems to be split 50/50 from local residents and people outside the city. So that is just a general education aspect of it. From the engineering and design, as we repave roads and do infrastructure improvements, we actually follow the Complete Streets, which is supposed to be a pedestrian-friendly document. We do the Complete Streets checklist. We make sure that we can do as many design, traffic calming measures as possible. One of the issues that, on the engineering side is, we get this a lot, is why don't you make the roads smaller? That changes the whole dynamic of everything, and it's just not feasibly possible. For traffic calming, we've done, you know, the piano keys. We've done hard stop signs. We've done the flashing lights. We've done police. I think we've spent almost $20,000 this year on police overtime just for, for speeding. It doesn't help when a road is repaved because we all know it turns into the Autobahn, and people just love to drive it. I make the joke that potholes are nature's speed bump because they slow everyone down.
I'd love to have our old road back.
One of the other things that we've been, that we've done is we've increased the use of speed trailers. We've purchased, I believe, two this year, if not three. Those are the ones that say, the speed limit is 25, you're going 36 because that visually slows people down. It's, at the end of the day, it's difficult to control speeding because the road is long. And we've done everything that we've known, as the mayor mentioned, it was a Hoboken report that we're all intimately familiar with. Traffic islands there aren't going to work. We've had, you'll see Mr. Manzella's over there, the transportation manager. We've had numerous discussions because we know this was going to be a problem, especially as the road was repaved. That's why we purchased more of the speed radar so that people would slow down because they do work. We get, we, you see the stats that when you put it up, people do slow down, but they're expensive. They're 15 grand each. So the, in a nutshell, there's no real obvious solution. We enforce, we do design, we do education. It's hard to change someone's bad behavior with that until they get those two or three tickets. And with all the construction going on, with all the visitors we have, the education component is important, but at the end of the day, it's going to be enforcement. If you see a cop there, you will slow down.
Well, unfortunately, I don't have a problem because he's parked in front of my house. I've literally seen with him over an hour or two period of time, him leave 20 or 30 times to chase down a car. Unfortunately, if I were to live on the other end of the street, that means the speeding took place in front of their houses, not mine, because they're slowing down in front of mine. But everybody else, the 50 or 60 other homes that they've sped past along the way, those are the folks that have the real problem.
It's a, it's a resource issue. It's, it's the traffic calming issues. I don't disagree with you. Once someone pulls away, everyone's done it. You see a cop, you slow down, then you speed up again. Once someone pulls away, everyone's done it. You see a cop, you slow down, then you speed up again.
Is there a reason why we can't divert? It seems that Bimbler is clearly cut through over to Ridge, and then left on Fourth, left on Third. Is there a reason we can't put no left turn signs and reroute them back to the surface streets, which would be Asbury Avenue and Sunset?
We can look at it. One of the things that you're...
Make Fourth and Third a one-way?
No.
No, no, no.
They would just not be able to turn.
No, no.
No left turn on to Third or Fourth.
So we would cut down on traffic coming.
One of the things that is gonna be adopted hopefully tonight is what's the infrastructure component report. The infrastructure component report governs how the waterfront is built. And what we added into that report is that there will be a traffic study done for the waterfront. And that whole issue is actually gonna be a citywide. We've talked to the master developer about it, that we should look at this thing not just as the waterfront, but it's the city as itself. And that should be done, we hope, by early next year, by the summer of next year. It just takes time to get these things done correctly, because there's, the law of unintended consequences. We do one thing, it's gonna impact somewhere else. We really can't just look at one or two streets. If it makes sense, we do it, but we do need to look at this as a bigger issue.
What we've done with the yellow lines is created a visual cue that that is no longer a residential street. As you travel into the city, you're on yellow line roads, Asbury, Wippeco, which those speed limits are over 25 miles an hour. So the natural inclination is if you make a left onto a road that has yellow line roads, you're now no longer anticipating that that is a residential street, which statewide have speed limits of 25 miles an hour. So the consequence is we've given them a clear path to speed down and a visual cue that says, this is what you should be doing.
Well, I don't agree with that. I do think that the lines are traffic calming, keeps people in a confined area. As the mayor mentioned, is part of the Complete Streets aspect that I disagree with you on.
Is there some sort of timeframe that we're gonna address this?
Address what?
The speeding.
We address it every day, but...
Well, putting an officer there is post facto. They've already sped before they met up with the officer. What are we gonna do to eliminate the speeding?
I don't know how you eliminate people from speeding. I'm not gonna lie to you. People are going to speed. It's how do we get them to stop? I don't know. That's a question that, you're changing people's behavior.
One answer would be to reroute them out of there, or if we, understanding that speed, or that stop signs are historically not a tool to address speeding, it is a tool to address the route somebody takes. Somebody knows that they're gonna face five stop signs on Fourth Avenue before they get out to...
Then they come to Third, and in a month from now, they're at Third complaining the same thing you are. That's why we have to look at it as a big...
I think we route them back out to Asbury, which has a partial commercial aspect to it, in the Ocean Town side, and we're backed out to Asbury Avenue. Why are we routing them through a residential neighborhood?
There's a couple of issues with that. We don't route cars. GPS in this day and age routes cars. So, I gave you this example a couple of times. In my last town, we had low hanging electric wires that once a week, someone was coming down, because a truck that was too large was following GPS and went down residential areas. People are gonna follow the GPS. And we can look at, you know, putting the stop signs, but it has to be comprehensive. We can't just do one street. It has to be comprehensive, but it also is GPS. Because people who come here, they're gonna follow the GPS, and it doesn't matter if there's, the route's gonna say go down Fourth, and if there's 50 stop signs, they're still gonna just keep going down Fourth. It's...
But if there's a no left turn sign, then they can't.
And then, in a month after this, we're gonna have the people on Third here.
I don't wanna throw a problem from Fourth to Third, or over this, or any other street, but it would reroute folks to the natural routes into town.
So, Michael Manzella, who's our transportation planner, I'm sure would love to hear more about making, I don't think you have to, can you contact this guy and talk to him about his ideas? Oh, you already have?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dani Fiore. I own a business on Bangs Avenue, 717 Bangs Avenue, and I'm really happy to be here in Asbury Park. A lot of you were at my ribbon cutting in November. I was very upset the other morning, I was working early, to walk outside and see that directly across the street, a bakery is going to be opening up, not even 50 yards from me. So, I am just here to ask if, with all the new planning and things that are happening in this town, if some kind of zoning restrictions or regulations would maybe be considered. Maybe it's a distance. There's a lot of pizza places in town. None of them are directly across the street from each other. There are many coffee shops. None are directly across the street from each other. I was really, really excited about my first summer, and now I'm actually really nervous, because I have a direct competitor that's gonna be opening up across the street. And I'm not on Cookman. I'm not on a high-traffic street, so, you know, the foot traffic that we get is pretty minimal. And that's just, just one of my big concerns about having competition right across the street. So I'm just wondering if that's something that could be considered with the planning board and with all that's going on with the new development.
The master plan reexamination report called for reviewing all of the zoning districts. So when we start that process, we'll take your account into consideration. But that would be the legal way it has to be done. It's a study of the districts. So, we'll take it under advisement and look at it.
Wish me luck.
Good luck.
Hello. My name is Janice Quilligan. I live at 26 Pine Wood Drive in Neptune, New Jersey. But I'm here to speak tonight about the Asbury Park boardwalk and about music on the boardwalk, and especially about the use of, no use of amplifier law that you have here in town. The reason I bring it up is because in numerous federal court cases, and all the way up to the federal level, court cases all over the country, it has been found that use of amplifiers, a ban on use of amplifiers is illegal by federal law. Most of the communities whose amplifier ban was found illegal have gone to Fair Noise Ordinance that specifically addresses this issue. There have been numerous court cases around the country addressing what is a fair volume level by street musicians using amplification. I brought some information, which my wife has, which is basically this and my card and a couple of other things. I've been involved in music my whole life. I spent 10, 12 years of my life as a musician here at the shore down at the Osprey in Manasquan. I was a member of a band called Salvation. Everybody goes Salvation, right? Biggest band in the state. Nobody touched us. We were the biggest band for years, right? You knew you recognized me.
Well, I worked at the Headliner, you should play that.
Okay, yeah. We played at the Headliner, at the Rowman, or all that. I'm involved now both here with a business called Jersey Shore Records Corporation, and also in Nashville with a record label that I own. It's called Your Star Records in Nashville. But I do live here at the shore. The reason that I'm bringing this up is, is I'd appreciate if one of the council members or some staff would talk to me about this issue, because we need to look at it. It is illegal. I mean, it may be legal in Asbury Park, but federal law says it's illegal. There was, I brought in the handouts here, I still have 37 seconds. Good. A little bit of the verbiage that came from a recent case against Newport, Rhode Island. It says, this is what came out from the court. Amplifiers are also used to create new messages that cannot be conveyed without amplification. Amplification enables performers to boost the relative level of quiet instruments, such as the bass and lower register to the human voice, and to adjust the total levels of voices and instruments without necessarily increasing the overall volume of the performance. So you get the idea. Amplifiers have a volume control, and they can be turned down. I would suggest that, you know, you come around with a sound meter, and the sound level that has been agreed on pretty much nationally, and it's also gone to court cases, because some cities say, oh, we want 50 dB. Well, when you speak in normal voice...
Okay, I'm gonna have to cut you off because of the time.
We're all done. Okay, sorry. And...
Time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah. I think the city manager's gonna answer you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, it's all right. Just let it happen.
So who we can talk to?
Fred and I have started this discussion yesterday. So we're doing both legal research and going from there.
...the law that was cited along with the current restrictions in the city.
Do you have handouts you wanna give us?
I'm sorry.
Did you have handouts that you wanted to give us? Could you just give them to Michael right there?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening. Warner Baumgartner, 5th Avenue. I find it interesting that the yellow line was painted down Fourth Avenue also. Many years ago, I started to see double yellow lines painted at various intersections in my neighborhood. I came to a council meeting, and I said, you know, this really is a visual clue that it's a high-speed road. And the council agreed, and they erased the lines. And I think that that logic, which was presented earlier, still has merit. Double yellow lines on streets typically evoke the feeling of a higher-speed road. You can't get around that. That's just common sense or human nature. My suggestion to eliminate some of the speeding would be to just raise the speed limit. I mean, these speed limits are artificially low. 25 miles per hour is very hard, is very hard to maintain, okay? So if you want to eliminate the speeding, make the limit 30, okay? You'll catch less speeders, and you'll have less problems on that road. So put your double yellow lines down, make the limit 30 or 35, and we can have some major thoroughfares going back and forth to the beachfront. Okay. I feel obligated to give a little bit of history. Years ago, Rita Moreno owned the Kingsley Deli on Kingsley Street, right smack in the middle of the waterfront redevelopment area. It was a breeding ground of various characters, malcontents, activists, local, you know, people around Asbury Park. And that is where I met Jerry for the first time. Jerry had just come to town as an investor. He started buying cheap property, which was on the condemnation block, so to speak, and flipping those properties. And from what I understand, he did very well for himself. I spoke to him many times. We disagreed about things many times, but we always remained friends. He was quite a character, quite proficient in real estate. He moved on to Long Branch, and to his credit, he still came here every single council meeting, not just to bring Rita, but to actually be concerned about what happens to Asbury Park. Many people from that time period are no longer here with us physically, or no longer here interest-wise, you know? There's a few of us left that still come and voice our opinions, but those are the true Asburyites that everyone here should have known and should seek to emulate to some degree. Questioning government, doing things that are out of the norm, and challenging the city to do better than it can at all times. So my hat's off to Jerry. I'm gonna miss him. He was quite a character. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Coroner.
Totally agree with you, on the second part, not the first part. She can only talk once.
You know, I have two minutes, 30 seconds left.
Yeah. You can whisper into her ear and tell her what to say.
Oh, well, Anna, I'm gonna tell her.
No, 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 no. No. I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion. She can get up and talk, or else I'm gonna make a motion to close, since there's nobody else in line.
Well, Anna, if you want to talk about outboatering and jetering.
Just close it.
Anna, either get up to the microphone, or else I have to make that motion.
I'll come back next week.
Okay.
Move to close, second. All in favor?
That's fine.
All opposed? Move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes this evening. Executive session minutes of May 23, 2018, workshop minutes of May 23, 2018, and regular session minutes of May 23, 2018. Have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Consent agenda. Resolution 2018 to 10, resolution approving special event applications. 2018 to 11, authorizing to ratify the PVA Local 6 Union Contract. 2018 to 12, authorizing, authorization to ratify the Superior Officers Association 6 Union Contract. 2018 to 13, authorization to ratify the International Federation of Professional Technical Engineers Union Contract. 2018 to 14, authorizing, authorization to ratify International Association of Firefighters Union Contract. 2018 to 15, authorizing a tax collector to prepare and deliver estimated 2018 third-quarter tax bills. 2018 16, resolution canceling balances of various trust reserves. 2018 to 17, resolution authorizing Tyrone A. Young Tax Collector to complete agreement with service and participation in electronic tax sale process for 2018. Resolution 2018 to 18, resolution approving tax sale costs for 2018. 2018 to 19, resolution to authorize year-end tax sale for 2018. 2018 to 20, resolution of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing the insertion of special item of revenue in the 2018 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48, colon, 4-87, which is a Chapter 159 for the ticket or click it grant. Resolution 2018 to 21 is a resolution approving award for contract for Regional Contribution Agreement Project, which is for 11/21, First Ave. 2018 to 22, resolution approving award of contract for Regional Contribution Agreement Project for 1300 Fourth Avenue. And 2018 to 24, adopting the FY 2018 Annual Action Plan for Community Development Program. Are there any resolutions that the council wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
Do I have to abstain from special events if I have an application in? Yes. Okay, then I'm abstaining from special events. Okay.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We'll move on to regular individual resolutions. The first one is Resolution 2018 to 25, resolution approving payment of bills. Councilmember Chapman abstains from purchase orders 18-01574, 18-01615, 18-01373, and 18-08376. Have a motion to approve the bills, please?
Move it.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018 to 26, resolution authorizing change order number one for the firehouse lintel project. Have a motion to approve the resolution, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 to 27, resolution authorizing change order 19 with Black Rock Enterprises for the road program. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 to 28, resolution awarding contract to third-party municipal court debt collection. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 to 29, resolution authorizing the purchase of asphalt materials from Stavola Construction Materials, Inc., for the paving of various roadways. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
No.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash 230, resolution authorizing the city manager to sign NJDEP Treatment Works applications. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash 231, a resolution of mayor and city council... of the city council of the City of Asbury Park acting as a redevelopment entity, authorizing a temporary cellular installation of the eastern portion of Block four thousand and one, prompting the Kingsley Street within the waterfront redevelopment area. Have a motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen to thirty-two, resolution rejecting development proposals for City Hall and Transportation Center site. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash two-thirty-three is a resolution approving two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen liquor license renewal. I believe council wishes to amend this, so could I first have a motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Move it.
No.
I agree.
The filed liquor licenses will be passed this evening. I'm going to read their name and their trading. PFL LC, which is Garcia Tapatia. Ohana Kitchen Company, which is a pocket license. Cookman Restaurant Group LLC, which is Cross and Orange. Asbury Lanes, Petty Bone Paradise LLC, and Twelve-Eleven Main Street LLC, all three which are pocket license. Fourteen Eleven Kingsley Street LLC, there's no names associated with this liquor license. TBD Inc., which is Taco Restaurant. Raspberry Moon Inc., which is Moonstruck Restaurant and Lounge. GTJM Inc., which is Jimmy's Italian Restaurant. AP Thirty Property Holdings LLC, it's a tiki bar aqua. House of Independence, House of Independence. Hemmings at Asbury LLC, which is Pascal and Sabine's. McLun's Asbury Park LLC, which is McLun's Asbury Grill. Nine Thirty-Four Shiv LLC, which is lush. You have Ash Kay Enterprises Inc., which is Middlebrook Bar and Spirits. Six Oh One Six Oh Three Liquor License Partnerships, which is Barrio Castara. Cookman, Cookmaine LLC, which is Brando's. Enigma Restaurant LLC, which is Enigma Restaurant. AP Restaurant Three, which is the Wonder Bar. And Asbury F&amp;B LLC, which is the Berkeley Hotel. Those are the licenses that we are acting on this evening, so have a motion to adopt that resolution, please.
Move it.
Second.
Any other further comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and eighteen to thirty-four, I'm going to ask for a motion to table, please.
Move to table, second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Well, this will be rescheduled for the June twenty-seventh meeting. Resolution two thousand and eighteen to thirty-five, this is omnibus resolution of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, authorizing various documents and agreements in connection with the implementation of lot-by-lot development in the waterfront redevelopment area. Have a motion to approve this resolution, please.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
I have a question.
I already started the roll call.
Sorry.
Okay, ahead. Answer the question.
No, it's just, I'm, does this include the boardwalk and the amendment?
For the width.
No, no one made the motion.
Okay, everybody voted down.
Then you can't bring it back this meeting.
Well, we said...
It will be brought back if those who are on the winning side make a motion to...
Right. If I vote no, I can bring it back.
So long as it gets voted down, then that's the winning side.
Right, because in closed exec, we said to fix two things, and we were told they're fixed. And now you're saying because we didn't bring it up, they're not going to be fixed.
You have to make the motion to fix it.
So then why don't you proceed in accordance with the...
Vote it down.
...mayor has suggested.
Does anybody vote no? Julie Colleen?
Consider the amendments that were not brought forward before the motion was made.
Did you vote no?
No.
Continue the roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Kendall?
Abstain.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Now, what are we doing, Fred?
I'd like to make a motion to bring it back with the two amendments that we designated to be put in during closed exec. And if you want to read them, read them.
Although it was...
Yeah.
Good evening. For the record, Jennifer Cardidio, McManam and Scotland Aboubatment, we're special redevelopment council to the city.
And you were in meetings where we said that we wanted these two amendments in, right?
So the, for clarity sake, the only amendment that I think that you are referring to now, the version of the resolution that you have before you, removed the language from the form of one of the documents that you requested.
Right.
So the only amendment I believe that we are still discussing is whether or not there should be an amendment to the form of the infrastructure component report that is attached as Exhibit B to the resolution in order to clarify that with respect to the meandering boardwalk between Sixth and Seventh, there shall be no loss of width.
Correct.
Yes.
And what was it? How is the first issue addressed?
No, there were two resolutions, remember? One with, one with and one without.
The first issue is...
The document, the documents that you have before you correctly, correctly addressed the first issue that was raised in executive session.
Okay. So now we're voting on what we thought we were voting on.
Okay, so the mayor made a motion for the amendments. Have a second, please.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
All right, now we'll move...
Just for the record, that would have a separate resolution number, so what would be that number?
Two thirty-six.
Yes.
Cindy, now that we've had a vote on the amendment, we need a roll call for action on the resolution.
Okay, so we need another roll call?
Yes, please. So the, the vote that you just had was to amend the form of resolution before you...
And then we need to vote to pass it.
Yes.
Have a motion to approve the new amended two thousand and eighteen to thirty-six.
Move it.
Second.
Question?
Yes, sir.
This resolution, correct me if I'm wrong, opens up lot by lot and does away with block by block.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted the public to know that. Thank you.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Thank goodness. Yay.
We'll move on to ordinances introduction. Ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-eight, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending the traffic parking regulations for Chapter Seven. Have a motion to introduce, please.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for July eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. We'll move on to the second reading, public hearing.
Hold on one second, please. Can we have the second? Because the sooner we put this in process, the sooner we make people happy. They complained about things at the parking committee. So why can't we put it on the second meeting in June?
We can, if that's what she wants.
Please do.
So I amend that and said, "Public hearing is scheduled for June twenty-seventh."
Thank you.
Second reading, public hearing, two thousand and eighteen dash two fifteen, I'm sorry, two thousand and eighteen dash fifteen, adoption of the amendment of the waterfront redevelopment plan. Have a motion to open this ordinance to the public, please.
Move it. Second.
Was there at all in favor? Okay. All right. I've read the documents at great length, and I agree with what's being attempted here. It's certainly a major change and should probably stir redevelopment in the right direction. I did testify at the planning board at the prior meeting as the city historian, and I questioned their understanding of the boundaries that are being discussed here regarding the redevelopment areas. And the resolution from the planning board back to the council put that concern as a line item and requested that the mayor and council examine the question. So I'm here to find out what your examination has revealed about the understanding of what the boundaries of the redevelopment area are. Could someone tell me what was found out?
Mayor and council, the form of ordinance that you have before you addresses the comment from the planning board, the, we reviewed the redevelopment plan, which speaks to the boundaries of the area. It speaks specifically to when the boundaries of the area were implemented. We believe that those recitals are accurate and that the redevelopment area, as has been implemented for some, you know, two decades or more now, is accurate, and that's reflected in the text of the ordinance in front of you.
So that, that's the answer? That's the result of the inquiry was to quote the redevelopment plan verbiage? Is that correct? I, I see it right here in the ordinance. Specifically says, "Ida Mae, that in nineteen eighty-four, the city found the area between Grand and the beach to be blighted or in need of redevelopment pursuant to New Jersey state redevelopment law." This is a direct quote from the redevelopment plan, correct?
It is, yes.
Okay. Are you aware that that is completely inaccurate?
We do not believe that it's inaccurate. Our view of the plan, as I said, that's been in effect for more than twenty years now. We believe it to be correct. We'd be happy to review it further if the council...
Okay, this is exactly the issue that I brought up at the planning board, that these quotes being cited from the plan itself, they carry no force of law. Redevelopment plan is not what designates a redevelopment area. The adopted ordinance that the city adopted in nineteen eighty-four is what establishes the boundary of the redevelopment area. Over the years, the redevelopment plan has been rewritten and actually very poorly rewritten, to be very misleading. There's a map in the redevelopment plan, which is in fact accurate. It designates something called the prime renewal area. The prime renewal area is in fact the only designated by ordinance redevelopment area on the beachfront. Anything outside of that boundary designated prime renewal area is not a redevelopment area. It's covered by the plan as a rehabilitation area. There are no standards specified. There's no eminent domain allowed. And it's a completely different animal than the area designated in nineteen eighty-four. The wording is very unfortunate, and I've brought this up over the decades. I know, I know this thing has gone on since eighty-four, and I bring it up every five or ten years when somebody makes this gross error of reading the plan and interpreting it as having force of law instead of the actual ordinance that establishes the boundaries. And I'm very concerned that what's happening now with the proposed expansion of the prime renewal area just muddies the water even further. And the reason for that is because the prime renewal area is a special kind of redevelopment area. It's one where eminent domain is permitted. It's one where a study was done, blighting hearings were held, and it was duly designated under state law as a redevelopment area. I do not believe that you can at will extend that area to encompass other lands. There's nothing I've read in the redevelopment law that allows that to happen absent having another study, declaring it blighted, and attaching it somehow. And I don't believe that that's ever been done. Now, with all that said, there is law that says a municipality can designate a redevelopment area at will. But it's a different kind of redevelopment area. It's one that is not like the prime renewal area. It does not allow eminent domain. And that perhaps is where this belongs. Now, that presents a problem in my thinking, because I know what you're trying to do. You're trying to utilize funding that's by law designated for the prime renewal area to encompass the lake to possibly do future improvements to the lake. It's certainly worthy gold, but I do not believe this is the proper legal way to do that, or if it's even possible from a legal perspective. I really think you need to look at this a little closer. Since the time I testified at the planning board, nobody has reached out to me to ask what I'm talking about. I can make this very clear if I had a sit-down with the planner or with somebody from the council, or perhaps the city manager, or the clerk, for that matter. We could look up the ordinance that designates the redevelopment area. And I think you will find that what I'm saying is completely true, that the boundaries described verbally in the plan do not coincide with the legally established boundaries by the ordinance. So that's my main concern. So you want, I think this is going to muddy the waters even more. Taking the lake and trying to attach it to the prime renewal area, I don't think is even legal, since that's a special kind of redevelopment area. Perhaps designating it as a separate redevelopment area, that makes sense. You might have to rework the ordinance that directs where the funding is allowed to split it between prime renewal area and this newly-created Sunset Lake redevelopment area. But there, there needs to be a more clear, concise way to do this than to just rely on some badly-worded language in the redevelopment plan, which is completely erroneous. That's my main concern. So I'd like to hear your comments on that. The rest of it's great. I mean, block by block versus, you know, lot by lot, you know, and all the other stuff that's in there. I'm in complete agreement with everything that's in this ordinance. But this boundary issue has been a vexing problem for decades because of poorly-worded language in the plan and the assumption that the plan is law, which it is not. So that's pretty much my speech.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Comments?
I think the redevelopment attorney answered the same. She disagrees with you, and she's the redevelopment attorney. She disagrees with you, and she's the redevelopment attorney.
Well?
And that it was addressed in, from the planning board. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't wanna put words in your mouth. And the planning board passed it. Corrections have been made since then. And you're, and you're right.
It's right here in the ordinance.
This is on March twelfth, and you and I are friends, so I'm not supposed to.
Absolutely, yeah.
You could've reached out to Michael, Cindy, your attorneys also. So if the phone works both ways, it's time to wait till tonight.
Can I ask a question of the witness? I mean, this is a public hearing, I can ask.
Absolutely.
Did, did the, did the ordinance get looked up? Did anybody look up the ordinance that establishes the redevelopment area?
I did not ask the city clerk to retrieve the nineteen eighty-four ordinance.
It's what? I'm sorry.
I did not ask the clerk to retrieve the nineteen eighty-four ordinance. We believe that the plan speaks for itself.
Okay. And my testimony is that the, the plan language is incorrect. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is closed, this ordinance to the public.
Move it. Have a second. Second.
Have a motion to adopt two thousand and eighteen fifteen.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?